This is a regular meeting of the Marrow Council, Borough of Seaside Park, State of New Jersey, Ocean County, held on Thursday, September 28, 2023, advertised to begin at the conclusion of the work session which has now just ended. Pursuant to the provisions of New Jersey's Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting was properly provided by transmitting the notice of the meeting for publication in the Asbury Park Press and the Star Roger on January 4, 2023. Notice of the meeting of the governing body has also been posted in the corridor of the municipal building and in the office of the municipal clerk. Roll call?
Councilmember Ammaville.
Right.
Councilmember Condos.
Yes.
Councilmember Craft.
Yes.
Councilmember Dr. McHugh.
Yes.
Councilmember Well.
Yes.
Council President DeMichael.
Yes.
Chair Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Let us all now rise and join together for a moment of silence to be called by our pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, indivisible, with the living justice for all. The first item on the agenda tonight is a resolution. It's number 250, and it's a resolution of the governing body appointing William Beznecker as a police officer for the Borough of Seaside Park Police Department. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Councilman Dr. McHugh, second by Councilmember Condos. Roll call.
Councilmember Dr. McHugh.
Yes.
Councilmember Condos.
Yes.
Councilmember Craft.
Yes.
Councilmember Well.
Yes.
Councilmember Ammaville.
Yes.
Council President DeMichael.
Yes.
Much appreciated.
And the next item, naturally related, they two will take place momentarily, and it would be my honor to swear in Officer Beznecker. First, I'll have a brief introduction of those of us in the Seaside Park family, past and present members of the governing body already know Officer Beznecker, and we welcome him back onboard the municipality. And he's here with his wife, Megan. We welcome. And a new member of the family who's three months old, who is here as well in the back, and that is Anthony. And we welcome Anthony as well. And they're here with Officer Beznecker's mother, father-in-law and daughter-in-law, Bob and Sue Pian, and we welcome them with us here this evening. The Officer Beznecker comes to us. He's an employee and a officer with the Pemberton Borough Police Department, but we are fortunate to know he always had a dream and lived here, worked here, the best, and lives in our area and always wanted to come back here with us and be part of the family of police officers and the greater family of the Seaside Park community. He worked for the Seaside Park Police Department as a special law enforcement officer, Class One, from March 2017 until September 2017, and then after, attended the Ocean County Police Academy and graduated in May 2018. And then he worked as a Class Two for us here at Seaside Park Police Department from May 2018 to January 2019, when he accepted a full-time position at Pemberton Borough. And we welcome him back officially, him and his family here tonight, and we're thrilled and honored to have you, Officer Beznecker. And it'd be my pleasure, I'll come down off the podium on January to administer the oath of office, and your past and present fellow members of our police department are all here to join and welcoming you officially as well.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Bring the baby up so the baby, we don't mind the noise.
You can bring up.
We like that. Bring on Anthony.
Bring him on. Yeah. He's part of the problem.
I, William Beznecker, do solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of Seaside Park police officer.
All the duties of Seaside Park police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Cross us with my back.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you.
Take it for pictures like we did last time. Do a few pictures.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Next, our authorizations, there are two. One is an event, Ocean County Running Club, the 46th Annual Seaside Half Marathon and 5K Race, date and time, October 22, from 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. Location is the Boardwalk Quarter to Fourteenth Ave. and Fourteenth Ave. The second is the Irish Cultural Festival. It's an amended date and time, October 7, 2023, from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. Location, Marina Lawn. Any questions or comments from council, or if not, a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by councilmember Craft.
I'll second it.
Second by councilmember Woke. Roll call.
Councilmember Craft.
Yes.
Councilmember Well.
Yes.
Councilmember Condos.
Yes.
Councilmember Dr. McHugh.
Yes.
Councilmember Ammaville.
Yes.
Council President DeMichael.
Yes.
Much appreciated.
And next item, our payment of claims, 2023-251. It is a bill list for September 15, 2023, to September 28, 2023. Any questions, comments, or if not, a motion?
I.
Yes, Dr. McHugh?
Page one, Central Region Marching Band for the Parade. She's having a get by the.
It's a joint of that with the town, the bands were, and that particular, Boots on the Bay and the parade itself.
I just thought that was the whole purpose of that. And $700 that we paid, $700 for the Central Region Band. Page four, I guess that's the, what aspect, Steve, you know what aspect that, what kind of project that is? I can't. No. Or bonds? Pictures? Yeah, that was for the, the, they had a.
Return cards. Yes. They had a, they had a close to bonds for the improvements they were doing. We got a letter from Doug Romeyer to confirm the amount. Everything's been completed and it can be released now.
It has been.
Yes, yes. We received word from Doug that it was completed and the money can be released.
Sometimes he doesn't go through things. This is.
You know, Doug, I think I'm pretty positive, Doug, since that's probably a month or two.
Resolution as well.
And we did a resolution as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Page six, kite night. We, we, we paid $1,100 for kite night. How's that going? Was that successful as you and these?
I thought, I thought I was called, councilman, and it was successful. Building up the kite night. It was a slow hit in the start, after COVID, yes, and I knew that, calling times, talking to Joe about that, and he says, it's building up, every week it was building up, one more people, the back door, it used to be nice, not as big as it used to be before COVID, but it was still there.
Well, it was in the south side of town, it was, it was actually a boon to the town with parking revenues.
That's why we moved it. We used to have it down like a seven ave.
Yeah.
Remember, councilman? That, I think, was good out there. If we can move it north, we get parking revenue on our parking lot.
We're still. We were getting parking revenue back then as well.
But not as much, because there was no parking lots. We, we got, we got.
There's bathrooms, right.
There's rest. There's rest. Oh, street restaurant.
I apologize, we can't talk from the audience, because you have to come up, state your name. Please don't talk, talk from the audience, unless it's public comment, and then you can come up, state your name, address, and make a comment. Thank you. You can't have discussions from the audience with the, with the members of the council. Thank you.
So you think it's something worthwhile to continue?
Me personally?
Yes.
I do, I think it's, I don't like the dishes now.
I'm in favor of it. First, on the Recreation Committee, as a member of the Rec Committee, I definitely support it. I think it's a nice family activity that people can come to, that doesn't cost them any money. It's crowded every week, people with young kids go up there, they stay up there, they do pizzas, they eat on the beach.
Well, it used to, I remember, but there was also, you know, expense to the town. I remember it was a big, too. I hadn't, it was, it was.
Correct.
I could see it back then. Now, I don't really pay attention to it, I'm not up there, and I was just wondering what.
If I could tell a little story, I'll tell you a story from, I was in Puerto Rico. I was in Puerto Rico, I saw a food, and I said, where are you from? She said, oh, kite night, that's what she said to me, kite night. We ran away, Seaside Park was kite night, and so I think we should keep it.
I sense it right there.
Absolutely good advertising.
Why?
Maybe Dr. Werwood's first.
Right.
Maybe you can say that.
Are you ready?
Yeah. Go on, wait, you got some venture capital? Got some venture capital?
There you go.
Any other questions?
Yeah, 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 I might have it all on here. It's, it's not a big expense, but I guess we're renting that fence goes around the hotel?
Play hard?
Yes. And that's, how much we paying around that time? Is that a one-time or a monthly fee?
Monthly.
$300 a month rent fence.
That fence rental runs over the pool.
You go around that pool, we pay $300 a month to, for a fence. $3,000 a year. Can't buy fence, put up fence.
When we entered into the agreement, we didn't realize we could take this long.
Yeah.
I'm assuming it helps us on a liability perspective. We need to have, eventually, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. But do we have to, I know we have to have it, but, I mean, it's not the paving area, and we're gonna, if we do do something, then we're gonna have to put a fence around the property anywhere, and can we spend a little bit of money?
Soliciting bids?
I need bids.
Please solicit.
Yeah.
We're on the court, maybe we solicit.
Oh, yeah, this goes for.
See courts.
I don't know, it's just. I don't know how long this thing's gonna go, but if it does for a year, then $3,000 that we really.
Hopefully not. Hopefully it won't be another year.
I don't, we don't know. That's the whole problem. That's all. Thank you.
Any other question, comments on the bill list? If not, any motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by councilmember Woke.
Second.
Second by councilmember Craft. Roll call.
Councilmember Well.
Yes.
Councilmember Craft.
Yes.
Councilmember Ammaville.
Yes.
Councilmember, Dr. McHugh.
Yes.
Councilmember Condos.
Yes.
Council President DeMichael.
Yes. The next, our resolutions are written in summary fashion. 252, authorizing designated miscellaneous refunds for Marina Slip 108. 253, authorizing the sale of surplus property no longer needed for public use on online auction website, that being the two vehicles referenced at the work session. 254, requesting approval of items of revenue appropriations in the budget. 255, appointing Joshua Fox as superintendent of water sewer. 256, appointing Glenn Sebold as permanent part-time building maintenance worker for the Department of Public Works. 257, appointing Anthony Largieri as team boy plumbing inspector, plumbing subcode official. 258, approving the amendment for date change for the alcohol beverage control social therapy special permit of Ocean County St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee for the Irish Festival. 259, authorizing myself to sign a letter of support and intent to participate in proposed NJTPA Ocean County Subregional Studies Program, Ocean County Coastal Evacuation Plan Improvement Study. Any questions, comments on any of the resolutions from any council member? Hearing none, it's our practice, it's not required by law, but we entertain public comment on any resolutions, if anyone has any, if they could give their name and address into the record. Hearing none, I would close the public portion as to resolutions, and I would entertain a motion as a consent agenda.
Double bear.
Motion by council president DeMichael.
Second.
Second by councilmember Condos. Roll call.
Council President DeMichael.
Yes.
Councilmember Condos.
Yes.
Councilmember Ammaville.
Yes.
Councilmember Craft.
Yes.
Councilmember Well.
Yes.
Councilmember Dr. McHugh.
Yes.
Much appreciated.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. It's a public hearing on Verizon Wireless Small Cell Facilities, and we have the applicant here, and we have our attorney, Robin Laboue, who's here, so we'll take a moment, make it all, get set up, get comfortable, and we thank Mr. Zabarski. Yes, Robin, we'll have the council we have here to enter an appearance, and this is a hearing, as noted, perhaps Ms. Laboue can summarize where we are and what's going on. I know the planning board is gonna have the presentation previously.
All right. Under the Borough Ordinance, the wireless carriers have to get a permit from municipality in order to put up their facilities, and then under the process, permit then gets referred to the planning board. This applicant had two hearings before the planning board, did revise their application to meet with the conditions that were, and the comments and all the concerns that the planning board and the public had, they revised their application, and now it's been approved by the planning board, and they're back here before the Borough Council in order to get approval, and the Borough is the one who issues the permit. We're limited, really, to aesthetic concerns and reasonableness of their proposal, that we can't prohibit wireless facilities from being located in the borough. So I think we'll just wait to hear what they have to say. They're gonna present their plans to you, and note all the conditions that the, that the planning board put on, and the changes that they made, and then it's up to the Borough Council to vote on whether or not they, they are approved and they receive their permit. Okay, so if you, I know.
Sure, yeah. Well, that was a useful summary. My name's Ed Purcell, I'm attorney at Price, Smith, Schulman, and Giaminio, here tonight on behalf of Verizon Wireless. The purpose of our meeting is, as Robin said, is to have the council review and approve two locations, two, basically will be installed, two new poles within the municipal right-of-way in order to effectuate a wireless deployment in the borough. I'll note that the, what we're proposing complies with the borough's code, and also complies with the right-of-way agreement that the borough entered into with Verizon. As Ms. Laboue alluded to over the last few months, Verizon's been working with the planning board to identify, you know, two ideal locations to place these facilities. There's, you know, been a cooperative effort, so I think you'll see that in the location. One of them had to be moved at the planning board's request, and we were happy to do that. The board did approve, or did recommend approval with conditions. Verizon is amenable to those conditions, and as we review the application tonight, I'll just note those conditions for the record, and we can, you know, just talk about them. Time-wise, you know, for these types of applications, there's a 90-day shot clock. You know, Verizon has extended that over the process, just so we could, you know, work with the planning board and develop plans that they thought were acceptable. And so basically, the shot clock expires tonight, today, so I would expect the council to prove it, to prove these applications, as I mentioned, they comply with the borough code, and they also comply with the right-of-way agreement that Verizon has with the borough. So we have two witnesses tonight. First is Nate Slack, who is sitting to my right, who will be providing some engineering testimony on small cells, and then Andy Peterson, who is our RF engineer, who's gonna speak a little bit about the need, and also speak about compliance with applicable FCC health and safety requirements. So with that, I turn to Mr. Slack. Would you like to swear in, or?
Yes, you just wanna go through the qualifications.
Sure, sure, okay, all right. Mr. Slack, can you just tell the board your qualifications and experience?
My qualifications?
Can the council, I should say, explain to the council your qualifications and experience?
Nathan Slack, I worked for Sher Design Group, engineering firm. I am project manager at the engineering group. I have worked on hundreds of small cell sites in design with multiple different towns, and have testified in front of multiple different boards.
And what's your educational background?
High school.
Okay, all right. And then, how many of these have you designed? How many of these small cell facilities?
Upwards of around 1,000.
Okay, all right. And you've been accepted by planning boards and governing bodies as a, as an expert in small wireless facility design?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I ask that the council accept Mr. Slack as an expert in small wireless facility design, in engineering.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Slack.
Slack, hey, do you want me to swear in?
Someone.
Okay, will you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this board is the truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Slack, you reviewed the planning board's recommendations with respect to this application?
Yes.
Okay. And you'll go over those, we'll hold those comments as we go through the various locations that we're proposing?
Yes.
So one question that's applicable to both sites is that they both use pulmated cabinets, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the board asked for clarification as to why underground cabinets and vaults aren't feasible. Could you speak to that?
Due to the FEMA floodplain, they can't.
Speak louder, please.
Sure. Due to the FEMA floodplain, they can't go underground. It's required that they be above the floodplain and with anything electric.
Okay. So, you know, per section 405-33D of the Borough Ordinance, Verizon is using the next preferred method, which is pulmated cabinets, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Lastly, with respect to colocation, this is another comment by the board, if, this one out? Oh, you'd like to have. Okay, this way, dear. Lastly, with respect to colocation, if another carrier seeks to colocate onto the pole, does Verizon agree to work in good faith with the owner of the pole, and that, so that carrier can colocate?
That is correct.
The owner of the pole, you mean, does Verizon agree to work with the owner of the pole?
Verizon owns the pole, right? This is Verizon, does Verizon own the pole?
Verizon's telephone owns the pole.
Okay. So this is Verizon Wireless, is the.
Okay.
So it's two components.
Different company, so you're the subcontractor installing this equipment for Verizon?
We're not the installer, we're the designer of the sites.
We're the designer.
Yes.
So Verizon Wireless is the, is, we're operating the wireless facilities on top of the pole. The pole is a Verizon telephone pole, is the answer. All right. Can we discuss site identified as JSC Site Park 16SC?
Sure. JSC Site Park SC, located at 74 O Street. We are installing a proposed pole with four antennas, three of which will be 5G antennas, one with a 4G antenna. It is located on the street opposite of the existing utilities and not within 200 feet of an adjacent pole. The shroud on the side of the pole is under 16 cubic feet. Each of the antennas is under three cubic feet. The top of the pole will be at 33 feet with the highest antenna top being at 38 feet.
And Mr. Slack, I'll just stop right there. With respect to the height of the pole, so the height is 33 feet, the maximum of the borough's ordinance is 35 feet or 110% of the height of the poles in the street skates, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so, but that's.
Yes.
Right. That complies with the borough's code, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And with respect to the, again, with the antennas, they meet all of the applicable volume requirements of those ordinance?
That's correct, yes.
All right. How can you speak to the size of the equipment cabinets, whether or not that?
The size of the equipment cabinet also applies.
Okay, it's less than 16 cubic feet?
That's correct.
Okay. Can you talk about the stalling?
Yes. The antennas and cabinet will be painted or wrapped to a brown color to camouflage the antennas and the equipment cabinet shroud.
Does the proposal inhibit site triangles?
No. It is more towards the middle of the block.
Okay. And does allow the, does the, does the pole allow adequate room for pedestrians to pass and repass?
Yes, it's in the rock area between the sidewalk and the curb.
And has this facility passed a structural analysis?
Yes.
And the facility is going on a new pole, so there's a 200-foot linear spacing requirement. Does this pole meet that requirement?
Yes.
Okay. It's located on the opposite side of the electrical distribution system?
That's correct.
Okay. Is it located in the area with underground facilities?
No.
Okay. Can you speak a little bit about the CAFRA requirements?
CAFRA requirements, we will have to apply to CAFRA for their approval in the area for any ground service.
Okay. And can you discuss requirements with respect to FEMA?
Yes. FEMA requires us to have all electrical, all electrical equipment above the floodplain and I believe the floodplain here was at seven feet and our ground is at five, so two feet above, all our equipment is five feet above the ground.
Okay. All right. Does the council have any questions with particular, with respect to this particular site before we move on to the next one?
Can you just repeat with the address, what you said, what did you say, 74?
It is 74 O Street.
It's in the right-of-way nearest to 74 O Street, that's correct.
Ask your question, sir. How did you pick these streets arbitrarily?
You know, there's, our RF engineer can speak to, you know, where the need is and, you know, how we determine sites. If there's a question with respect to, you know, how this site was determined with respect to compliance with the ordinance, maybe Mr. Slack can speak to that, but.
So you're saying this is one of the best places to put it in the town?
Again, our RF engineer can speak to why, why from a need perspective it has to be here. Mr. Slack can speak to why in that area this spot complies with the ordinance, that's what I would like to ask.
I understand. Do these units have to be within so much distance or within sight of another unit in order for this to work properly, or?
That would be, that would be a question for Mr. Peterson.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay. All right. Moving on to the site entitled JSC Site Park 17SC. Can you describe what's being proposed here?
Yes. JSC Site Park 17 at 919 North Ocean Avenue. We are proposing a new pole with four antennas and cabinet with three new units in it. It will be one 4G antenna and three 5G antennas.
Okay, and like the previous pole, it meets all the applicable height requirements with respect to the.
That's correct.
Click to that page.
Can you just repeat that, how many you said compared to the other ones, the same going on?
The same.
Or the same, so you said three 5G, one 4G?
Yes.
Just talk about the heights?
Yes. Heights are the same as the other pole, where the top of the pole will be at 33 feet, highest antenna top will be at 38 feet.
Okay, so again, that complies with the ordinance requirements for the pole being 35 feet or 110% of the poles in the street skates, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And with respect to antennas, they meet the volume requirements?
That's correct.
Okay, and that's for both antennas that are being proposed, or?
Yes, all the antennas.
Yes. And is it below than 18 inches of the code line?
Yes.
Okay. Can you speak a little bit about the stealth technologies that are in place?
It will be, it will be either painted or wrapped in a brown color similar to the other ones for both the antennas and the shroud to help conceal the equipment on the pole.
Okay. Can you speak to, does this inhibit any site triangles?
No. This is on the edge of the beach, not near any intersection, or not near any viewpoint of an intersection.
And does the pole allow adequate room for the pedestrians to pass and repass?
Yes. There's no sidewalk on the side until the beachfront.
And this pole has passed a structural analysis?
Yes.
Okay. And the facility is going on a new pole, so there's a 200 linear foot spacing requirement, correct?
Correct.
And does this pole meet that requirement?
It does.
Okay. And the pole's located on the opposite side of the street from the electrical distribution system?
That's correct.
Okay. Is it located in the area with underground utilities?
No.
Okay. Can you speak a little bit about, you know, CAFRA permitting for this site?
The CAFRA will also be, need to be applied for for the sort of the ground in the area.
Okay. And then with this particular site, it's on a, it is located on a county road, correct? Some additional county approval will be required?
That's correct.
And I'll just note for the council that, in case you didn't notice, when you want to put a pole on a county road, you know, you have to get a county approval, but you also have to get the approval of the municipality in which you're located, your ordinance speaks to that, and this is the vehicle and the mechanism by which that approval is provided. That's all the questions I have from Mr. Slack. If the council has any questions about this site?
One question. If the county says yes and the town says no, let's go.
Well, then that's a bit of a problem.
That's why I was, wow.
Well, I guess the way in which that would be handled is, you know, if it was an unreasonable denial or an unlawful denial, then there would have to be an appeal to federal court.
Of course.
Right, but our, you know, I don't anticipate the county to deny this.
Just ask them.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, okay, but, you know, when I look at that head on, when I look at that box, for, for, no better term, about five feet above the ground?
Right here.
Yeah, five, the one that's five feet up, is that the one, the dark space there on the?
No, no, that's a, that's a ten. At five feet is the meter.
Okay, and how tall is that whole thing?
That piece is 69 inches tall.
Okay, and does it, like here, it looks like it's flush to the pole. Does it actually go out from the pole?
It sticks out from the pole on the side. It'll stick out from the pole about 19 inches.
So that's five feet above the ground, and you're over five feet tall, you could walk here, I mean, you probably wouldn't want to be able to walk around it at all.
No, that's a, the bottom of that's a ten.
The bottom is a ten?
Yes.
And then, and then it goes, then 16 inches toward the road like this, or?
It'd be to the opposite of the travel of the road. Not towards the road, it like, towards.
Parallel?
Here's, here's the road here, here's the box. It would be parallel to the road.
Parallel to the road?
Yeah, not, not on the untummy traffic side.
Okay, so what's five feet above the ground, though?
The electric meter.
And what, how far does that stick out?
The meter box itself is, that is about 4.8 inches.
So that's, that's, that's negligible, but the other's a foot and a half, about?
Yeah.
So if you look out your window, you're going to see the pole and then.
The piece off the side.
The piece off the side. Counsel, can I ask you a stupid question? Has this benefited people, by doing this, has it benefited people at Seaside Park?
Well, I mean, our RF engineer can speak to that, but there's a need with respect to capacity. In other words, that, you know, when there's blocking because there's too many people are using their cell phones, but I'm just going to profit that because he's really going to talk about what the need is.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And you'll talk about the obsolete items that are required to remove obsolete items as well?
And that's something that obviously, you know, Verizon would agree to remove any type of obsolete equipment that's on these poles that's no longer used.
Including phone lines?
Well, that is a Verizon telephone issue and certainly, you know, that's a, that is a separate matter. I do recall, I think we were here before, and that was an issue.
Yeah, it was.
And, you know.
They got burned it up.
Right. And, you know, and that, I take your point. That is a related but a separate entity. You know, Verizon Wireless is not a public utility, Verizon Telephone is. You know, Verizon Telephone owns the poles. To the extent there's an issue, you know, with one of these poles, you know, I can, I can say that Verizon Wireless will resolve it. I recall there being, the last discussions or other poles that were the issue, is that correct?
Well, you know, it's just, I mean, when you look at the town and you talk about aesthetics and, you know, I mean, one side of the street has, you know, electric, K.O., and then below wires are all, all Verizon copper, old copper wires that pretty much are obsolete now. And they're, they're ugly, unsightly.
Well, I can say that, I, again, you know, here is the applicant Verizon Wireless, that's outside of the scope of what they do, but I can say that, you know, from my, in my capacity, I can certainly communicate to Verizon Telephone and have those folks reach out to the borough and, you know, work with you on that issue, but it's not, it's not a stipulation disagreeing with it because Verizon Telephone isn't an applicant here.
I, I understand, but we're talking about obsolete items, I just thought that, you know, it is, you have the same meaning.
Yeah, I understand.
And I just thought that that would be a nice gesture since they really are unsightly.
How many in total will we have when these two get expanded?
Mr. Peterson, can you speak to that?
Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, what obsolete equipment are you talking about?
On the, on the poles?
That you're going to remove, the court, the planning board requested that.
Well, I think what they're saying is that with respect to if there's antennas that are no longer used, that they're, that it will be removed. Mr. Slack, can I?
Right.
Well, I know, but they're saying in the future. Maybe you can speak to that, where antennas, if replacement antennas, can you go through that process?
Yeah.
How that would happen?
If they would, if they were to replace the antenna, we're doing this in some other areas that, like, say they're upgrading the type of antenna, they would remove the existing antenna and replace it with a new antenna.
So again, we're not leaving it up there, it's being removed and the new equipment has been placed on the pole.
And if this, all this technology becomes obsolete, I mean, this is, this is, uh, five, right?
5G?
5G. 6G is already out there.
Mr. Peterson can speak to the, speak to that.
So, all right, so if you've got a 6G, you're going to tear all this stuff out?
Well, I mean, I'd say that, you know.
Really augment it.
Pursuant to your right-of-way agreement, you know, there's a 15-year term and presumably, I would assume, you know, that's more likely going to be extended, it'll be new agreement, it'll be continued, but at the end of the term, if it's not, then the equipment needs to be removed. So again, you know, it's not like this is going to be a situation in which they're just going to be there. And I, you know, we don't foresee that really happening, that it will be removed, I think the agreement will be extended, but certainly this is not a situation in which there's any likelihood that this equipment's going to stay there unused and, you know, in a problematic manner.
Sounds like we're at a party downstairs.
Yeah, we're missing.
Thank you, thank you. For example, some of the antennas are 4G, I guess when 4G becomes obsolete and Verizon is inaccurate, I guess you would come in and remove those, that type of equipment?
That's, that's correct, and if you, you know, and if you have any more questions with respect to how that's going to be done on the pole, Mr. Slack can speak to that, but.
Thanks.
I have another question.
That's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Don't have any questions, move on to Mr. Peterson.
Oh, one other thing. How many units total? I know it doesn't pertain to your particular application, but how many units total are we talking about in ten?
That's what I asked.
Yeah, Mr.
Oh, he's going, you didn't answer that.
No, he didn't answer it, he's going.
Mr. Peterson's going to speak to that.
All right, thank you.
But they have to have an H in their name, right?
I do.
Yeah. Mr. Peterson, can you just go over your qualifications and experience?
Sure, Andrew Peterson, P E T U, P E T E R S O H N. I have undergraduate and graduate degrees in electrical engineering, both from Lehigh University. I am a registered professional engineer, state of New Jersey as well, as well as six other states. I've been involved in the design of these types of facilities from a radio frequency perspective now for about 20 years. Testified hundreds of times before municipal bodies, federal court and state court as well.
I would ask that Mr. Peterson be accepted as an expert in radio frequency engineering?
Okay. Mr. Peterson, can you just raise your right hand?
Sure.
You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Proceed.
Mr. Peterson, Verizon Wireless is licensed by the FCC, is that correct?
It's correct.
Okay. Can you go over what Verizon Wireless's needs are and what's being proposed by the way of these facilities?
Sure. So, to answer the question that was posed earlier, this would be the eighth and ninth small cell facility in the borough. There is, Verizon is dealing with an ever-growing capacity demand, particularly with the influx of summer shore traffic. It becomes very difficult to deal with folks who are now working remotely in the summertime, all of the uses that people now have for their devices, streaming video, folks that are no longer subscribing to landline phones or even landline internet service providers are relying solely on their wireless device, not just for voice, but for their data services. So it's putting a tremendous strain on the Verizon Wireless network. So currently, there are, there are three sites in the area that are serving traffic, three, I should say, three macro sites. And I'll use the board just to illustrate.
So macro sites, like a, like a, like a tower, a ladder tower?
Right. Yeah, in this case, there are, there are two, two water tank sites. One in the southern end of the borough and then, and then one up to the north, north of the borough. There's also a facility on a rooftop, also to the, outside of the municipality to the north. These are the macro sites in the area that are, that are serving traffic in the area.
Is that Northern, Northern, on Seaside Heights, the Northern Tower, Seaside Heights, right? Water Tank?
This, yes, yes.
Seaside Heights?
Right, the Seaside Heights Water Tower. Yeah, this is the Seaside Park Water Tank. Well, off two. Uh, this is the, this is the one on.
12th. For the 12th, yeah.
Yeah.
You'd be willing to rent the other one when you're spaced up there?
If it works for Verizon's, you know, for Verizon's purposes, I'm sure they'll have a look at it. The, this, this is first and foremost a map of the borough boundary, shown, and then Seaside Heights to the north. Beyond those existing macro sites or tower face sites, we have the seven small cell sites that are also indicated on the map here. And then we have all the coverage footprints from all these facilities, so it kind of creates this patchwork of coverage. And we use this to deal with the demand of, of the subscribers in the area. So each of these small cells that we have has a distinct coverage footprint and will absorb the traffic from Verizon Wireless subscribers in the areas of those coverage footprints. You'll notice that in the northern portion of the borough here surrounding the proposed location of the Seaside Park facility, I think there was a question as to why, why do we need a site there? You can see that there is no small cell site in this area. So this area and all the Verizon Wireless subscribers that are in that area are currently being served by that site to the north, the water tank up at Seaside Heights, which is creating this pinkish shade of coverage area. So it's, it's reaching a bit too far to serve into an area that is better served by, in this case, a small cell facility into that area. It's a more efficient way to serve the customers in that area. And then the, the other facility that we're proposing, the Seaside Park 17 site, is just to the southeast of, east of that, in another area without dominant server coverage from a, from a small cell. So we're, we're piecing together two more puzzle pieces that will best serve the Verizon Wireless subscribers in the area, particularly at times of heavy usage.
Does the signal go from the big antenna to the small cell or?
No.
From one small cell to the other?
Yeah, they're not like signal hops. This, the, the air interface goes from, you know, the device in your hand or your laptop or, or even your vehicle, whatever, whatever device you're using at the time, to the small cell. And then the small cell has fiber optic connection to the back hall of the Verizon Wireless network. So there's no, there's no signaling between the towers except for through the, the switching network.
You don't really need the antennas? Do you really need the antennas on the, on the towers?
The water towers? Yeah, we, we still do. They provide kind of this overarching coverage, the umbrella of coverage through the area, into the areas that these small cells still don't get into. But we just need to offload some capacity that's, that's really draining capacity from those.
So the fiber optics go to these?
Right, fiber op, and also to the, and also to the, the macro sites as well. Every, every site is connected to the switching network through fiber optic.
So you base that fiber optic running all over, count them?
Yeah, there's fiber. I mean, that, that's pretty common.
Fiber all the time. You said that for a long time, actually.
Mr. Peterson, can you speak to, you know, what is the practical result when there's not enough capacity?
So when there's, when there's inadequate capacity, symptoms you'll see on your device will be similar to what you'd have at a busy concert or sporting event, when the wheel's spinning, when you're trying to send a text message, or if you're even making a phone call, you could have your call blocked when there are inadequate radio resources at the, at the facility they're trying to connect through. So that's a situation that only gets worse over time if, if not addressed, as demand is constantly growing.
I have a question. Are they on continually? Because obviously the demand is higher in the season when we have more people, but that's what you said, as opposed to, say, middle of the winter.
Did you ask if they're on continually?
Yes.
Yeah, they, they do, they do leave them active, even at times when, you know, there's certainly a seasonality component in, in a, in a shore town. But yeah, they, they do leave them active.
Could they be turned off?
I don't know that in practice Verizon does that. I don't, I don't know that.
I mean, because the reason you're saying you're adding more is so that you have the coverage because it's not adequate for the amount of traffic that you guys are seeing. That's what's driving you to choose those locations.
Right.
So I would think if the, the usage is down, I would guess here, more than half of the year, it would be significantly less, that potentially, if technically they could be turned down or turned off. I guess they don't do that in practice.
Yeah, in practice, and, and from a practical standpoint, they're available to use year round, but when there's no demand on them, they, they aren't transmitting, put it that way. When they're, when there's, if users aren't actively engaging with the, with their, with the resources, these are very efficient systems. They don't waste power transmitting other than basically like a paging channel or kind of like a beacon channel, if you will, that just says, hey, I'm here in case you need me. But that's not this, a constant traffic channel the way it would be at times of peak usage.
So how many two antennas will there be? Five G?
So each one of these facilities is, is designed with three 5G antennas and then a 4G canister antenna that sits atop.
Four times, how many poles?
So this will be nine.
The, the other poles that we have so far are 5G only poles.
So far?
Yeah.
How many do you plan on?
Oh, I didn't mean that. Just the, the other pole, the other poles that aren't existent.
How many poles do you have planned?
I don't, I don't know of any plans beyond these.
So nine or 10?
So there, with these, there'll be nine total?
Nine total?
Yeah.
And this will help you, only if you're a Verizon customer?
That's right.
So if I use AT&amp;T and they want to come in and do the same thing?
Well, I think we mentioned earlier that we would, you know, we would work with the pole owner and any potential co-locators to, to enable that process.
So how many companies can fit on one pole?
I guess it really depends on the, the equipment they're proposing and how we would, in conjunction with the pole owner, accommodate that.
Because I think, I mean, well, this is, you said you've done this hundreds of times and there's, if you read in the paper, there's some, I mean, you've got your work cut out for you, right? I mean, this has been a hard sell in some cases.
Yeah, and.
But.
In other towns as well, yeah.
Right. So the law is in your favor, but that should give you some kind of idea that people are really crazy about this in general, the public. Because there are a lot of unknowns. I understand you're here to help demystify any misunderstandings and, but when you talk about, you know, what we don't want is, we, as, as a person, I said, you know, the, the copper lines are, are bad now. But now we have these poles with these boxes that, you know, sort of grow up 18 inches and that is blocking your sight because it's parallel to the road. Then you have two or three other companies, you know, Sprint, AT&amp;T, I don't know, Nextel's out.
It's really just T-Mobile and AT&amp;T now. Sprint was absorbed by T-Mobile.
Okay. So, so they're really three big companies?
Yeah, there's really three wire, Dish is also starting to build their wireless network, but they're, they're significantly behind the other providers.
I mean, that's the objection. That's one of the objections of, of people is that, you know, you look at your door and you just have all these things hanging around you. You can't see across to neighbors, you know. And I, I guess you understand it, but as you've said, it's been a hard sell. So I mean, that should tell you guys something, right? I mean, I understand what you're doing and you have a kind of, you have us where we can't, I mean, so today's the deadline. You really can't do anything about it. You've got the right of way. You've got the precedent wall cases in, in, behind you and your favor. So really not much we can do, but, you know, but voice are objections and concerns as citizens. I mean, these, these are the, these are the things that, that everybody's concerned about, in addition to maybe, you know, having, having radio frequencies go through your, your head every second you walk down the street. And then, then some people may think that's ridiculous, but it's a valid concern with a lot of people as well. So, I mean, it's, I just, I just wanted to.
Counselor, can you, can you stop? AT&amp;T, you said you own the poles. Did you say we don't want you on our poles?
Well, there's attachment rules that apply to utilities and so, which are, in the same way that there's, you know, limiting factors under a separate set of regulations from municipalities and their management of the right of way, there's a separate, you know, pole attachment set of regulations that limit the ability of a utility to say no to these types of attachments. So basically, you know, it would be very difficult for, you know, Verizon Telephone or any utility to say no, you know, we're not going to allow these types of facilities on our poles.
Okay, so we have to, okay, you put one on top of the other. And you, you'd be on the bottom of the top and AT&amp;T be on, if they wanted a 5G, AT&amp;T be on top of yours?
There'd have to be a, there'd have to be an extension to the pole, you know, and obviously, you know, have to get, you know, that, that would have to happen. That'd have to be approved by the borough. But, you know, co-location is possible.
It's one of the conditions in the planning board's recommendation for that process to have to go through. The same thing there's.
Yeah, of course.
All of that would have to happen and then it would go through that where they look at the site, look at the location, adapt whatever had to be adapted, so that it would be a choice. And that would have to be that. That's one of the, that's one of the conditions that they.
It's got to be designed, but it's easy to say, I mean, no offense to you, but it's easy to say, oh, well, we'll consider all, you know, other companies to be able to use our poles. But there's nothing really to say. If the design doesn't work, then, I mean, it's easy to say now, but when it actually happens, you could easily say, no, that won't work. You have to find your own poles or whatever, or build your own poles and then it won't be able to stop them because the, the, the cases to say that you're able to do it, you know. So you're the first, but definitely not the last, I, I wouldn't think. And, and start detriment as, as individuals. I feel. I mean, I may be wrong, but.
So this is going to make it faster service for the Verizon customers in Seaside Park? Or a better service?
Right, more robust, more reliable service, yeah.
Okay. Verizon customers own?
Correct.
I understand. You don't put the money for AT&amp;T. I understand that. Okay.
All right, Mr. Peterson, if there's any more questions on that, there's an RF presentation that Mr. Peterson has just concluded. Now we're going to move on to just the FCC compliance part. Is there anything left up, any, any more questions about the RF testimony before we move on to?
That was a radio frequency testimony?
Yeah, that was RF. This was radio frequency testimony with respect to need. Now we're going to move on to the FCC's electromagnetic frequency standard compliance testimony.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Peterson, can you, you know, describe the FCC standards with respect to EMF?
Sure. The FCC has very specific standards with regard to allowable electromagnetic emissions exposure. Those standards are outlined in the FCC Bulletin 65 from the Office of Engineering Technology. That document not only describes the standards, but also prescribes the formulas by which individuals like myself can evaluate proposed facilities that we can't go out and measure. We can evaluate them and we do it in a, in a worst-case fashion to determine the anticipated electromagnetic exposure from those facilities in all areas of public access, including, of course, ground level surrounding the site and any elevated positions that may be near the facility, rooftops, balconies, et cetera, that folks from the general population could access. So that's, that's what we did in this case.
So I'll just note that you prepared two reports, one report for each site. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And I'll just note that those were previously provided to the borough. Can you go over what's in those reports?
Sure. Those reports detail the specifics of the facility, including the make and model of the antennas, the antenna counts, the center line heights that are proposed of those antennas, the distances to the closest structures, the specific radio models and the antenna models that are proposed at those structures. And then using all that information and the, and the guidelines and formulas outlined in the Office of Engineering Technology Bulletin 65, what I do is I perform a worst-case assessment on the facility that includes a, a number of upper limit assumptions, including 24/7, 365 activity, maximum, maximum transmission power, 100% ground reflection, and then some other upper limit assumptions to determine the theoretical maximum exposure levels in areas of general population accessibility. And then compare those levels to the allowable or permissible exposure levels. In this case, both facilities were found to be compliant with the FCC guidelines for maximum permissible exposure and compliant by a wide margin.
Excuse me, what is the effective radiative power at the, at the horn?
At the?
You know, at the antenna?
At the antenna. So it depends on the antenna we're talking about, but the.
Worst case?
So the, the 5G antenna is going to be 1,000 watts maximum power. That's, that's a maximum power. And then the 4G is going to be lower than that. That, that's the maximum power, the power amplifier plus the gain of that, that beam forming, the 5G has a beam-forming high-gain antenna. So that would be the maximum.
Okay. So we've got like 60 dB gain or something like that?
It's much greater than that because it's a, the, the 5G antennas are, are active beam-forming antennas, so they can, they can create, and it's, it's relatively higher frequency, 28 gig. So there, there's a lot of beam-forming gain that can be realized by that antenna. So it's, it's.
So is it dynamic beam-forming?
It does. Yes, it does dynamic beam-forming, yes.
Can you just, when you said like there's a limit set by the FCC, I think you said, and then you do a worst case to make sure that the worst case is within that range? Can you just like say what, I don't know, I don't think they have that here, right? That's all on this.
I was going to say, I think we have that somewhere. I didn't have that.
Can you just say that like in layman terms, like the limit is X and where F Y?
So the, the limit depends on the, the frequency band.
Okay.
It ranges from about 450 microwatts per centimeter squared, and it's, it's in power density, up to 1,000 microwatts per centimeter squared, when we talk about ranges of, above a gigahertz. So any, any, any frequency band that Verizon's using, which would be all of them in these cases. So, so the, the maximum is, is that 1,000 microwatts per centimeter squared power density. Typical, typical findings for exposure levels from these types of facilities are going to be on the, on the order of a thousandth of that, maybe no, no more than a hundredth of that at ground level surrounding these facilities. I don't have the exact numbers in these reports.
Okay. So wait, so I just want to make sure. So whatever it is, so let's just use your 1,000 number. You're saying your worst case on what you believe these put off would be like 1,000 of that?
Right, like a hundredth at most of 10 microwatts per centimeter square, somewhere along those lines.
And it's from the antenna?
That's, that would be the exposure at ground level surrounding the facility.
Ground level?
Yeah.
And so you're, you're the house, three-story, and you're three stories and you're looking, you're within 30 feet of this thing. If it was 20 feet, that's closer to the ground level, right?
So, yeah, and, and we do look at, we do look at that. And the examination that I do includes any elevated position that may be, that may get, where a, a member of the general population could be closer to the antennas and more in the, in the main beam of the antennas, if you're, if you're in elevated position. For this configuration that Verizon uses, and it's, and it's a pretty standard configuration, the exposure levels that would potentially exceed the FCC guidelines, you'd have to be within five or 10 feet of the front of these antennas. And, and there's no elevated positions that are accessible that are, that are within that distance in either of these poles.
Well, it's a cumulative thing now.
It is. There is a cumulative effect, but the power from these facilities decays so quickly. It, it decays with the square of the distance. So if you double your distance from the pole, you're, you're now a quarter of the, of the power density. And that's, and that's on paper, theoretical maximum. In reality, you have trees and other buildings that degrade that signal. So there is a cumulative effect, but it's, it's really negligible when you talk about the next pole being several blocks away.
Now, this is a, the antenna's no more than two cubic feet and how big's the box?
How many cubic feet?
Less than 16.
16. But in here, Counselor, doesn't it say in the FCC order prohibition here, it says definition of a, a small cell wireless is antenna no more than three cubic feet and equipment total no more than two cubic feet? That's what it says here?
That's what it says.
But you're saying 16. So that's more than two cubic feet?
Well, that's in your, that, that's the definition from your ordinance is, has a limited 16 cubic feet. Are you speaking about the definition of a small wireless facility?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, right?
Well, again, I have to, you have to look at the, the definitions in the order of how it defines different things. You know, there's equipment, there's.
They saw a structure that's either no more than 50 feet, just like you asked these guys to qualify, and no more than 10% taller than adjacent structures. But it says no more than, the definition of this is no more than two cubic feet, and you're closing something at 16. That doesn't fit the definition.
Yeah, again, you know, I, I'm, you know, I don't have, I don't carry the 2018 FCC order in front of me, but I believe if you look at the definitions, the definitional section and the, there's terms, those terms are further defined, that, you know, what is being proposed in here, it's a cumulative definition of, you know, cubic footage for cabinets. And, you know, I'm certain that this, you know, fits within that definition of a small wireless facility based on those definitions of how that, how those terms are defined in the order itself.
It's reading the FCC order.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know. But it's, that order is about, you know, 180 pages. And there's not, what are you holding in front of you?
Uh, it's something that.
It's a memo and it's describing the 2018 FCC order and how that order defines what a small wireless facility is.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm fairly certain that that is, there's something, there's something lost in translation there between.
I think there might be. I'm going to pull up.
Between order and that.
Can I just ask one more question to, so I'm clear. So the electric.
So the electric EMS that you just described to me, that's coming from the antennas at the top of the pole? Or within that box that...
Only from the antennas.
Only from the antenna, okay.
Yes.
So to the point that Dr. McHugh was making, because I was thinking that too. If it's up and those houses are raised, you're at that 10-foot level easily. You know, houses are now up 35 feet easily.
15 feet from the curb, we have close...
Right, side, yeah, set back. So it is potentially that people are...
You're close.
Closer than maybe the average model.
Yeah, I looked at these two locations specifically, and we're required to do that when we verify compliance, so...
I think the one on the ocean probably would be less close to the presidential than the one on Oak Street would.
Yeah, every existing pole that are already there, you know, these are new, right? Poles, so I don't know how, billions, you know, how, how close they are to the actual... Like if somebody's sleeping, you spend a lot of time sleeping, you know?
Right.
So you'd be quite exposed.
Yeah, that's why we do look, you know, at the individual location that's picked and any potential for elevated positions that would be closer to the antenna. And we consider that.
Have you won any permissions to pick this site?
I didn't pick the exact location, no. It's done internally by Verizon Miles.
Any other questions?
Thank you. What's the proposal date to start this?
Well, you know, obviously, you know, the approval is obtained. Construction permits, electrical permits need to be obtained. Needs to be a street opening permit from the county and municipality and the borough for the borough roadway. So it's hard to tell. I can't give you an exact date about, you know, when it's gonna happen, you know, it's gonna happen.
Six months a year?
Nate, can you speak to that? Can you get any idea? I mean, generally that happens within a year, sometimes a little, you know, more, but probably within that kind of period.
A year?
Yeah.
5G, you'd be off sleep then. These people are really here just to give us a courtesy, Counselor. Really, I don't think whether we approve it or not, and we could say anything because of the time limit. Right? I mean, the time limit's over today anyway, so you get your approval one way or another. But so I appreciate you coming to explain this. We're just asking, that's all.
No, I appreciate you asking, and I enjoyed the conversation.
I'm sure you...
I don't know what that says about me, but...
I did pull up the ordinance, and it does say an antenna is limited, each antenna does not exceed three cubic feet in volume, which is part of the order. And that the above-ground cabinets will not exceed 16 cubic feet in volume. So it's different than what's in the order. That order was specific to that facility. And our ordinance has a larger volume for both of those things.
I think that's federal communications commission now.
It's just an, I think it's just an, it's an order for a specific facility, and it doesn't necessarily apply. That's just how they're defining facility in that order.
Yeah, I just noticed that.
No, no, that was a good, that was a good net.
Okay.
Anyone else have any other questions?
That concludes it.
Would you like to have the public ask questions?
We would if the council, everyone's down on council, you might also have a public comment? May I do a motion for a public comment?
Yeah, let's open this up to the public. And as per the open public, we exactly, if anyone has a public comment or question, if they could come forward, give their name and address. Word two. Good.
Virtue Martin, H12 North Baby Avenue. I guess it would be to one of these gentlemen. Are the, your box, is this made out of aluminum or what metal?
That would be for Mr. Slack.
I believe it's steel.
Okay. And as far as the antennas, have they been tested for wind because of the hurricanes that we've had here?
Yes, as part of the structural analysis.
Okay. And what, what wind do they hold up to?
I don't know off the top of my head, but it is, it is measured for worst-case scenario.
It applies with all, it complies with all applicable structural codes, compliance.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Michelle?
Michelle, no one's picking her name out of you. If I had to have a pacemaker, what would that, the Gs or the electrical current? Is it safe to walk next to this?
Yeah, but, so there've been extensive studies on implanted devices, like pacemakers, and these facilities don't, don't interfere with that.
Yes, Mitch?
Mitch Cottler, 204 Kent Avenue. I've had the privilege of hearing your gentleman speak, this is the third time. And something new came out tonight, at least as far as I was concerned. I'm a little surprised, Mr. Peterson. Dr. McHugh asked a question about the antenna arrangements on the existing one. And you indicated reports on the two new ones, there'll be three 5G and one 4G. And you mentioned, unless I heard wrong, there are no 4G on the existing ones.
I don't believe so.
So why are you installing 4G on the new ones when it's a technology that is becoming obsolete? You're basically putting equipment on new poles that will be out of value in a relatively short time. You didn't put them on the old poles when it was still state-of-the-art.
So the antenna itself, that canister antenna that sits atop, it's actually technology-agnostic. It's, it's just an antenna. The radios that sit in the cabinet, they're 4G radios. So we refer to that antenna as the, as the 4G antenna. But what we, what we do, and we do this with macro sites and small cells, over time, as technology evolves, let's say Verizon decides to deploy 5G in their 1900 radio spectrum, which is right now, they're, they're still using that for 4G. They can, they can swap that radio out that's in the cabinet. And now that antenna that's on top is, is still doing some 4G and some of the other bands, but now it's got a 5G radio at 1900. So it's, it's very much upgradable, that antenna. And Verizon has decided, and I've seen this elsewhere, that they, they want to put 4G on these, a lot of the new poles that they're doing, just because of the demand. There's still a lot of demand on the, on the 4G technology, which admittedly now is a decade or more in the making, or...
Easy.
Yeah, at least. More than that, yeah, probably 15 years it's, it's been out. But there's still a lot of demand on it.
It doesn't make business sense to me. If I understand correctly, we have 4G antennas, Verizon antennas, on our water towers. And then the load off of 4G is being reduced because there are more and more cells coming into the area, especially during the season, on 5GR. And yet you're still putting a new 4G. It would make business sense to me, and I was a businessman. If you need four antennas, I put four 5G, not add a, an antenna that you say could be upgraded that doesn't have the value since you've already got the technology in excess on the water towers.
So we, we don't have an excess of 4G on the water tower? We're, we're dealing with capacity demand as a whole, 4G, 5G, all of your, all the phones that are in our pockets, they can do 4G and 5G. So the best way right now for us to deal with the onslaught of demand is to deploy 4G and 5G at these new poles.
Am I wrong? I, I thought the way the cellphone technology worked, as you say, they can do 4G or 5G. The default is 5G.
Right, and if all the 5G resources are exhausted, your phone will roll back to 4G and look for some resources there.
Well, that's my point. So if that would be the case, then I would put an additional 5G on to take advantage of that. It just seems from a business perspective, you guys are going the wrong way.
What, what I don't think you understand is we don't have another band of 5G that we can deploy at this site. We, we have 5G at 28 gigahertz. Right now Verizon isn't using any of these other bands for 5G. So they're basically deploying what they can deploy here in terms of 5G. I do understand your point, but we don't have another band of...
So you mean it couldn't be upgraded until you got more access to, to the additional 5G bandwidth?
Right.
Theoretically upgradable, but you can't because you don't have access to it.
Well, we do. So what happens is Verizon will use each frequency band for a given technology. And when that technology is ready to be sunset, let's say 4G is ready to go, they'll start to transition those bands over to 5G. So eventually, they will take the 1900 megahertz band, which is being deployed here, let's say, and regionally or nationally, they'll start to make that a 5G band. At that time, though, when demand is such that that makes sense from, from the big-picture perspective, they'll roll that into 5G. And I would suspect at that time that, that the 1900 radio here will be swapped out with a 5G 1900 radio. So, so I think the point is, I think it speaks to your point. They are deploying all the 5G they can here just because of how, how each band needs to kind of swap over holistically. But we need more bandwidth here, so we're also deploying 4G. Does that make sense?
Any other questions? Yes, Alan?
Alan Mobley, 145 Little Street. I have no idea what you're talking about because you're way above my pay grade. But it seems to me like 5G should be coming here, but Verizon or that company doesn't want to put it here. They want to stick us with 4G, which we have already. So why aren't we, since you're coming into our town, why aren't you giving us the best product you've got? Which would be 5G.
We are deploying that on these, these...
On these two box, on these telephone poles?
Yeah, and the other poles, they, they already have 5G.
They're all gonna have 5G.
They, they do already, yeah.
Okay, but you're not gonna exchange what's on the towers?
On the water tanks?
Yeah.
I, I would suspect they already do have 5G on the water tanks as well. I'd have to double-check that, though.
Okay, because those two water tanks get a lot of exposure because they're pretty high up, I guess 300 feet, maybe a little bit more. And I think they should be 5G right off the get-go.
Yeah.
I, I don't know if, like you said, you don't know, but I certainly don't know. I'm not climbing up here, it's too high for me. So, you know, I would appreciate somehow making an email to our DA.
I can confirm.
We can have 5G up on them?
I can confirm that. I'm 99% sure. I don't want to say 100% because they've, they've rolled 5G through this area as far as the macro sites go. Sometimes there are situations where it becomes more difficult to add the antenna, et cetera. So without verifying, I don't want to say 100%, but my, my suspicion is, you know, that, that those sites already have 5G on them.
Okay, thank you.
Cheers. Any other questions, public questions, comments? Right now I'd close the public portion and turn it back over to council for doing a summation or deliberation.
If you have anything you want to say in closing?
No, I, I think it's, you know, the application speaks for itself, it applies with the ordinance. Obviously, as you see, order exists as applicable. I think it's, I think it's also explained by way of our, our experts and the call that we've all had. So I asked the, the council to approve of these two applications subject to the conditions required by the board that Verizon has agreed to.
So then the council can deliberate and consider...
Any questions, findings, or comments from council? I know we've had some already, and we've had at the planning board level as well. And you see there's some of the conditions that the planning board had recommended.
Yeah, I stated some of them before. I mean, my biggest question was the amount of, I guess, the amount of coverage that we're placing in such a small area. I personally don't like it, but that's not what you hear from my personal like or dislike. I think that you met, and I trust the due diligence that I think the planning board has done. I appreciate it that you guys came and explained it. I do think it would be beneficial in future presentations that you can try to take some of that complex math and make it more understandable so that most people can understand what you're doing. Because I think that's where a lot of the fear comes in, right? The not understanding, so you can kind of, you know, do it the 1-on-1 version. I, I understood what you said. I'm personally not a fan of it, but I, I don't think that that matters in this case. I think the, if the, you know, the law permits it, we don't really have a choice. And then planning board has done their due diligence as to locations, and they've met all the feedback.
I, I think it's kind of moot really, it's built because you're gonna, you're gonna get the approval. Because it's dated, today's the last day. I mean, you're forced to act anyway. If you didn't act, you'd get automatically approved, correct? Yes. Well, yeah, but I want to say, and, and, you know, honestly, and I, I'm not real fainted either, but, you know, I think back, there was a guy who was a ham radio, was in the Ham Radio Hall of Fame, Henry Meyer, lived on North Avenue, and he had this big tower right across the street from him that used to admit, pretty, I guess AM, I don't know what frequency that ham radio is, but we could, we could hear it on all our radios, you know, growing up. He'd spend all night. So I know those poor waves are going right through my house anyway, and I'm still here.
We do it that way.
But, that's why, that's why, yeah. So I appreciate you guys coming to explain. I know you didn't really have to. I think that's, that's the, that's the point, and I do appreciate you coming. So, thank you.
Thank you. I know, Counselor...
Can I say one other housekeeping item? I realize, and looking at my notes, one thing I wanted to ask Andy that I forgot to ask him. The planning board asked, you know, that we, you, you speak to the police department and the borough department, make sure there'd be no interference with respect to emergency services and the utility infrastructure that the borough has and communication that the borough uses. You've confirmed that, correct?
I've confirmed it, yes.
You know no interference?
Yes. I, I spoke with Detective Alan Mance, who was actually here tonight, and also with Chief James Boig. I sent a couple emails to the chief, just explaining what we were doing and asking if there were any concerns. And I, and I didn't hear any back.
I just wanted to put that in the record. I realized that the board asked us to do that. I realized we had to go into that.
Yeah, I know. After one, council knows I would echo the sentiments already vigorously pursued at the planning board level. So my silence here shouldn't be interpreted as that I'm thrilled with this either. As I asked the question of council, what happens next? And your company, for example, you're saying at this juncture, there may not be plans for further expansion. And we have to take that at face value, but so too we have the other carriers out there. And you combine them all, it creates an unsightly and seemingly unnecessary atmosphere. Too many, and that's why we asked as best possible that there could be some sharing condition imposed in this resolution. And hopefully, if there's another carrier that comes before, it's a similar type arrangement. Now, as best possible the technology allows it. I, I'd ask further than that, and it sounds like it's impossible to share the actual device itself, but that would be ideal rather than having to have so many different enifices out there and the unsightly nature of them. And so too, we've had some concerns in the town about there's simply too many wires, some of which may have been deemed obsolete. I know it's not necessarily your corporate entity that you're representing, but combined, the cumulative effect, there has to be some cumulative responsibility out there as well. And there, there's seemingly too many, too many lines, and they're all bending to the wind, is one of the comments made. And they've given us some assurances, but I don't know. Obviously, we're prone to some extreme winds here, and I, I don't know. The more out there, the more, there's some leaning right now as we speak. And it's a legitimate area of safety, I think, to be concerned about. Does anyone else on the council have any? I know we've carefully looked at the record and the submissions of, through council, and also those that came before the planning board. And our engineer was made aware of the hearing. Unfortunately, he had another meeting conflicting directly with this. He couldn't be here tonight, but he would be available if need be. I know you can never... I know you can never presuppose what we might rule upon, and as such, there's a draft going in a whole number of directions in the computer of council, so we do have that as we have to adopt a resolution this evening.
Can I read that by title?
Yeah.
Libra, resolution number 2023-260. Resolution of the Borough Seaside Park, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, approving an application of Cell Co. Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless for right-of-way permits for the right-of-way nearest to 919 North Ocean Avenue and 74 O Street.
I'm sorry, can you say a word?
So approving an application of Cell Co. Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless for right-of-way permits for the right-of-way nearest to 919 North Ocean Avenue and 74 O Street. So we'll be approving those two locations that were discussed.
And it doesn't need to say cell size or what it's...
That's just the title. I mean, I can read the whole, that's just the title.
The plans are attached, so...
Yes, it does incorporate the plans.
The resolution...
I thought I had it. I didn't realize I had it.
The resolution has all the conditions.
It incorporates all of the conditions from the planning board. That's okay. Which we can go through if you don't have a problem.
Nine 19.
Nine 19.
Nine 19 is straight near East Street.
It's J Street.
It's North Ocean.
Jay Street.
The ocean?
Jay.
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 I'm sorry, only because I didn't read it in advance, I apologize, I didn't know what happened. And just, what is K referring to? What is this fee?
It's the annual fee, the permit fee.
Oh, it's a permit.
Is that being established, the annual fee?
It's $270 annually.
Purple?
Purple.
That's the FCC maximum number.
People pay you more than that a month.
Seems kind of meager.
Seems a little low. $270 to make all that money for your peak season.
Any other comments on council, any questions? If not, we would...
Yeah, we might get a motion.
We'd entertain a motion.
Yes, I'll move that.
Motion by Councilmember Kraft.
I'll second Mr. Kraft.
Second by Councilmember Amabile, for approval of resolution 260 with the conditions memorialized there, and the plans are referenced as well. Do I have a roll call?
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Amabile?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilk?
Yes.
Councilmember Dr. McHugh?
I, I've never been a favorer of this. I'm, no, it doesn't really matter, I'm not voted, but that's fine, that's fine.
Council President DeMichael?
Yeah.
Motion approved.
And, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you as well.
Is there anything else on the agenda?
Nothing further on the agenda, but we do not have a public comment yet, Penny.
Okay.
So I hope that we'll go back into the regular meeting agenda. We have public hearing and entertaining, if there are any public comments, if you have any, if you could come forth, give your name and address into the record.
You got it, gentlemen. This is the public comment. Okay. I have a question, well, I have a question, I guess, and a suggestion. It's about the data flooding still. For the last storm we had, we were so lucky, it was a northeast wind. If it had ever been a west wind, blowing as long as it did, the homes along all of Bayview were really looking at truly an innovation and a disaster. And I know there's things going on, the state, the county, whoever. I have a suggestion. Supposedly, you can't do it. If they could put up some sort of just a wave break, will always flood, but it's the waves that'll roll in from the next west wind. And there's two now hurricanes out in the Atlantic brewing. Some sort of, like a burn, just there that's movable. It seems like they didn't oppose the sandbags that were piled there, which amazed me because when they deteriorated and floated into the bay, they were plumes. So it would have to be something very substantial, like the things that they, not the plastic ones, that they use around the...
Concrete road barrier?
Yeah. Or they also had them up, I believe they were cement, if you were coming south on Central, just before you hit for the arts and crafts show, I believe two of them there, it might have been cement. If they could put something like that, something else they could do. And the county was really nice because there's already a sign up for them. There are huge boulders sitting under the Osprey Nest that we've already purchased, that were on Central Avenue in the medians, that they decided to move. Town already bought them, we own them. They're all around the Osprey Nest, but they're not moving it up, they're not doing anything with it. If they could temporarily be moved to H Street, and the county has already put up a sign that says, stay off the rocks, because they already put rocks, smaller ones, they're encased in metal. These are just bigger ones, temporary, that's all. But something has to be done. The bay, the ocean is, excuse me, well protected, it looks fabulous. I'm thrilled that it's that way. Even the bulkhead that's on Bayview is falling apart. The water comes through it now, and in a really bad storm, it does still come over it. My thing is, pull the boulders out, put them there, it's just going to stop wave action. But it is the wave action that we really, in a storm, have become part of Barnigan Bay. And it is, when you think of everybody's major investment, is their home, and it has been. During Sandy, it was Bayview that was hit worse than any other place in town. Two more hurricanes are coming. For this past northeast storm, again, it was a blessing. That wind had come from the west for four straight days, it would have been a disaster. Also because we sit basically right across from the Toms River, so it just picks up its momentum as it goes along. That's it. I don't know if it's possible, but if you talk about it, we own the boulders, the county was nice enough, they've already said to keep off the rocks. So when we put them there, we're just adding to what the county's got. Thank you.
Thank you, Gar. I'd just like to comment on those particular boulders. Of course, you have to have an engineer verify it. Since the shape of those boulders are round, those waves will move those instantly onto the road. That is the problem with those particular boulders. Not saying it's not a good idea, but I guarantee you, they will roll immediately with those waves. That's just my thought, personally.
Okay, you don't think they'd settle in there a little?
No.
They might as well try. Personally.
No, I'm not saying it's not a bad idea, and I appreciate you coming up, I'm just telling my own personal feelings, they were all.
Something has to be...
The sandbags from that location came all the way down to D Street, and they were completely intact. They rolled that far in the water before they disintegrated.
Right.
That's how far the sandbags moved.
Well, they were certainly a different weight, but some of these boulders are huge.
It's only my personal, I'm just saying. I'm not saying it's not a good idea, and I realize what takes place on the bank.
Yes, you would.
I'm just saying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And certainly, Gar, you're correct, it was, we were very lucky, because tonight is a full moon, and it added all in a different set of circumstances, we'd be looking at major, major problems.
I would also like to just mention, I Street, as of, I believe Saturday, and it was flooding terribly, had no road closure at all. There was nothing at the top of I Street. And looking now on my way here tonight, many of the streets to Bayview still have up their road closure signs. I Street doesn't. And truthfully, people come down, a lot of people think it's fun if you've got a, you know, a big truck with your high off the wheels, they literally create waves that might never have gotten to anybody's house, but they do. And I would just ask that, I don't know if it's the police department or the borough, I know that has changed, that the signs do get up for the first, if we're going to be having horrible rain and flooding again.
And we passed an ordinance.
I agree 170, but I Street is a county road.
Yeah.
And that's the problem. I do agree that those barriers should have been up sooner.
Yes.
There's no question.
But they still do, we still do put barriers up.
They always had, but there was none.
There were none.
No, there wasn't.
And the vehicles that ride up and down Bayview Avenue create a...
But we passed an ordinance, we passed an ordinance in the last couple of years.
We got...
We need enforcement. It needs to be enforced, yes. There is an ordinance.
There's no enforcement. And I can understand, the police don't want to park in the water.
No. We did.
Thank you, Gar. Any other public comments? Yes, sir.
Tom Joseph, 704 Bayview Avenue. Have two topics, one real quick. Yes, there's no enforcement. I live on Bayview, I watch these people drive up and down whenever it's flooded. Half the storms that have reached my garage only got there because some idiot drove down the street at 20 or 30 miles an hour and sent a wave another six feet into my lot. I would love to see some enforcement. I'm glad to hear it's a five mile an hour, but I don't think anybody knows that, and I have never seen anybody enforce it. That's item one. Item two, completely different subject. I heard in the Neighborhood Watch meeting earlier this month, that we were moving away from this SWIFT 911 system and going to a new system for doing emergency notification. And that's, there were some problems with that system, and it's a good thing that we're switching to something new if indeed it works, and I'm happy to see, and indeed was happy to see an announcement on the city's website that we've brought in a new system called Raven Emergency Alert System. That's great, but I'm not up here because I'm happy, I'm up here because as soon as I started to try to get into it, I was immediately disappointed. So, first disappointment. I read that on the website using my Verizon 5G Android phone, which was in 5G mode, unless I was on my Wi-Fi, I'm not sure which. There is literally no way on your phone to get to any mechanism for signing up for that emergency alert system, from what I could tell. And, you know, maybe I'm a little clumsy with computer things, I've only been doing computer stuff for 60 years. So I think there's no way to do that. Now, I eventually figured out, if you realize the problem is, the website is not complete unless you go into desktop mode, which I suspect most people who use their cellphones aren't even aware there is a desktop mode. So I went to desktop mode, and that does indeed eventually lead to something. But let me explain why that's difficult. First of all, if you stay in the other mode, it says to sign up, go follow this link, and it gives you a link to the police department site. There is literally nowhere on the police department site to sign up. Instead, what it does is it repeats the same article that you can read on the city site, and then it has a link to more information, I think it says read more, and you can click on that. And when you click on that, you get to the same article over again, just printed in a different format with different pictures. So, so far, I've gone three levels into it on my phone, wasted my time, and I can't sign up. So I go back, I go into desktop mode, in reality, I went up and got on my real computer and looked at it and did the same thing, and I went back and checked if it worked. In desktop mode, you can read the article, and beside it is a list of places, different things that you might sign up for something instead. Access Town Data Online, Just FOIA, Smart 911, Community Event Notification, a bunch of things that are there. None of them say Raven Emergency Alert System. So I went back and looked at the article. Have you read four times in the article it references this Raven Emergency Alert System? There's nowhere on those. So I went, okay, it used to be SWIFT 911, maybe it's Smart 911. So I clicked on there. You get a big sign-in thing, still no mention of Raven. Guess what? You know how you get to Raven? You go another level deep, and you read the terms and conditions. Now, I imagine, Madam Lawyer, you always read the terms and conditions, and maybe a retired judge you do too. How many of the rest of you go in and read the terms and conditions? And even there, you have to look to find the word Raven. There's no logo, there's no nothing, it's just the word is eventually there. We want people to use this system. All you had to do to solve the problems is, one, come back to the beginning of the article, and in the first paragraph, say, to sign up, click on the block to your right that's labeled Smart 911. How hard is that? And then I don't know how you fix the fact that those sign-in blocks are not visible if you're in mobile site mode. I find usually that comes down to, probably they're visible if you're on an Apple phone, but they absolutely are not visible on Android. So this isn't hard to do, but let's do it right. I mean, if we're going to put stuff on the website, it's going to be the lead story up there, let's make it easy for people to use. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments? Hearing that, I'd close the public portion, I'd entertain a motion from council. Motion by Councilmember Wilk, second by Councilmember Dr. McHugh. Roll call.
Councilmember Wilk?
Yes.
Councilmember Dr. McHugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Amabile?
Yes.
Council President DeMichael?
Yes.
Thank you.